Good evening. The Monroe Township Board of Education Special Meeting is now called to order. This is a unique Board of Education meeting where it begins without a board president as chair. As the vice president, it is my role to chair the meeting until such time as a board president is elected. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
And the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeichner?
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on August 4, 2025, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
So, the first item on the agenda is the election of the board president. I just wanted to read a couple of sentences directly from our policy in case there's any questions before we begin the process. So, it says, "Any member may place a member's name in nomination. Though not required, a second is encouraged and permissible. The candidate receiving a majority vote of the members of the board present and constituting a quorum will be elected to office." So, I would like to open now the floor for any nominations. Ms. Sharma?
Hi. I would like to nominate Ms. Gail DePaine for the president.
Okay, Ms. Sharma, we'd like to-
I'll second it.
And Mr. Piero was second for Gail DePaine. Mr. Tufano?
I'd like to nominate Gazala Bora for president.
Okay, Mr. Tufano nominated Ms. Bora.
I'll second.
And Ms. Peck is second.
Ma'am President, point of order. Thank you, Mr. Tufano and Ms. and Dr. Peck for the nomination. While I have no doubt that I would be able to do the roll with full justice to it, I would like to refuse the nomination. I think we're at a point in our Board of Ed where we need to heal and work together. And just all of us getting behind one person to lead would be a first step towards it. We have a lot of critical work to do in the next few months. Full Day Kindergarten needs to be our prime focus. Getting Dr. Chanley back needs to be a prime focus. And I feel like if the board continues to have the chemistry it has had in the last year, we're not going to get anywhere. So, thank you both, and thank you to anybody who reached out and suggested I should do this. I honestly think I would like the work to, the board to work better together. And in that spirit, I refuse the nomination. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, are there any other nominations before we open the vote? All right, seeing none.
Okay. So, a yes vote would be for-
Yeah, so now we are voting to elect Ms. DePaine as the board president.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Motion tops as well.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Come over here. You get the gavel. Let's go. Yep. Is it warmer in there?
Come on in, it's hotter than yours.
Sure, you go ahead first.
I just wanted to thank Gazala for her words and know that that is my number-one priority and has been for the last year under Mrs. Fabiano, to have everyone on this board have a say and be able to speak from the heart, because that's where I speak from and that's where I come from. And I wanted to let everyone know that we're, we have to work together. We're on a ship. If you don't work together, when that ship is going down, it's going down. So, we all have to compromise, work together, and we'll all become one. And that's my purpose to be here. Thank you for nominating me. I've been thinking about this for over a year with Mrs. Fabiano in this position. She let me say what I wanted to say, what questions I wanted to ask, and I will let everybody here on the board know that everybody will have equal say and equal time and be able to express their own opinions here on this Board of Education. And I want to thank Mrs. Fabiano for a great job. She left me in a tough spot to follow. She did a good job for all of us this year. I want to thank Dr. Lehman for jumping in and taking care of this district the way that he did. And I want to thank Mr. Weiss for his one year being our board attorney, and it's been wonderful learning from you. Things that we maybe did not know in the past were right or wrong, but under you, we've learned a lot. And from board members here, we're all going to learn a lot from each other this year. And, well, until the next board is picked. So, I hope everybody is on board with that, and I think with Gazala saying it, and I think we all are together. So, I want to thank you all. And Gazala, your turn.
Thank you. I want to start by congratulating you, Mrs. DePaine, and I echo every sentiment that you put out right now. But I don't want to make your life difficult, but I did raise my hand because I wanted to make a motion. And I feel like that probably will become something that I keep doing in the future meetings till we have a resolution. So, I asked for the floor to make a motion that the Monroe Township Board of Education reinstate the Superintendent Dr. Chanley to her position. The current practice of paying her her full-time salary while placing her on leave without public really knowing enough about the reasons or an active investigation ongoing or even a defined timeline for a resolution, it is fiscally irresponsible to the taxpayers of the township. So, especially with all of you having received the recent tax increase, it was a blow to me personally. It makes us even more conscious of the fact. So, I feel like, given the legal fees that are also escalating with every day that she's sitting at home while being, having a valid contract, I think it's in the best interest of this district that we keep trying to reinstate her. And so, I'm making a motion that this board reinstate Dr. Chanley.
Second.
We have a motion seconded by Mr. Tufano, motion by Ms. Bora. Is there any discussion regarding the motion?
I would like to make a comment. We can't discuss personnel matters in public, but the board is ongoing with their discussions on this matter and have been working to continue these discussions in closed sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Anything else? Ms. Allen, can you take the vote? Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
No.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstained due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
No.
Oh, she does not pass. Thank you, Ms. Allen. You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Anybody who would like to speak, please come up to the podium. Since I'm president now, the next meeting, we're going to have a pad, and I'm going to want, ask you to please put your name, your phone number, and your email in case we can't get to your question that evening, that at least we have the information of the person who made the question or asked the question, excuse me, at the podium so that we make sure that we can take care of everyone's questions and concerns in the community. So, you have four minutes. Podium is open if anybody would like to go up and speak.
Eric Marazin, Monroe Township. So, my question is with that motion that just did not pass yet again, what is the plan? Is there a plan? Was there a plan? How are we going to move forward? Are we going to have, are you trying to invoke tenure charges against the superintendent? Is that the ultimate goal? Or is, is she going to be the highest-paid principal in the entire United States of America that we're going to be paying for because she's not going anywhere unless you invoke tenure charges, which is extremely difficult? So, just what is, what is the plan of this board moving forward?
I just want to say something quick, and Mr. Weiss would like to say something also. That's a personnel issue that we discussed in Personnel, which is, I think, in a week and a half. So, that's confidential. So, but Mr. Weiss, if you-
Yeah, Mr. Marazin, I appreciate your questions and your looking out. But as Ms. DePaine said, it's a personnel matter, and Dr. Chanley has rights as an employee here to have notice of a discussion about her employment. She has not been given such a notice for tonight's meeting, and therefore, the board cannot discuss the terms, conditions, or anything related to her employment either in public or in closed session, and that's in view of the Rice case.
Okay. And then, just in general, then, are we going to have a superintendent? Well, we have an acting superintendent who's doing a great job. Thank you very much. I know you're in a difficult spot, very difficult. But all right, so are we going to have an assistant superintendent in the future, or how's that going to work?
Again, as it relates to Dr. Chanley, Dr. Chanley is the superintendent. Dr. Lehman is the acting superintendent. There are no plans for any of that to change at this time. And unfortunately, we can't, for the reasons I previously gave you, we can't discuss any personnel moves or anything like that at this time. But we'll be certainly sharing as much information as we can with the public along the way. But given that this is a personnel matter, there is confidentiality that's involved, so we are rather limited as to what we can share.
So, you're not changing any positions or moving positions?
There's no plans. This board's not taking any actions to change, move, or add any positions at this time.
Okay. Because as, just as a taxpayer, you know, I'm concerned that my money is going to Dr. Chanley, who is sitting at home doing nothing except for probably talking to her lawyers. That's, that's really concerning for me. It's a waste of money, in my opinion, and hopefully, we can get this resolved. You know, there's new leadership, and hopefully, we don't just go back to the old ways with some other people that were on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting and go to item seven, which is a discussion of the board vacancy. Yes, Ms. Ratner?
I apologize. I had wanted to, I guess, piggyback on what you and Ms. Bora had spoken before, but we went into public forum, and I didn't want to interrupt the flow.
I see your hand.
It was like, it was fast. You probably-
Okay.
But I just wanted to say that I do appreciate both of your sentiments about the board working together. You know, I think I said this last week, but it was last week. It feels like it was so long ago. But when the two of us, along with Ms. Fabiano, ran, we ran on a slate that was United for Education because there was already a lot of division in our town, and that has not changed. And I think that there's no one person, no one group that's at fault. There, you know, there's been a lot of conflict, and all I can ask, I can't force anyone to do this, is obviously for all of us to try to work together by all means. You know, there's been, a lot of times, Ms. Bora and I were on different sides of arguments that we got into very heated discussions about the issue, but in a respectful way. I know that we've had that as well, keeping it to discussions on that and being respectful with each other, and then just to extend that to the community. You're allowed to have your opinion. I would love to hear the opinions of people as long as they're respectful and there's no personal attacks that are happening. So, I did just want to share that and hope that soon, sooner than later, we can all find a way to work together and focus on the things that we all want to focus on, I think and hope.
Well, we, great comment, and we all want to focus on the education of the students of Monroe Township. And we shouldn't have any politicalness, anybody attacking anybody up here on the board. We volunteer our time, and I've been volunteering for 21 years. And, I mean, to me, if I didn't love being here for the children, then I could be home, my husband's not home or anything, but I could be home sitting by myself watching a movie that he doesn't like. But we're here because we want to take care of all the children. I think everybody here can say that. I mean, there's no noes. It's, it's the kids first and, or the children first. I mean, maybe I can call my grandchildren kids or my children kids, even though they're 49 and 45, but we're here for them. And the more that we talk to each other, you know, you can talk in here and yell at each other out here, but after you walk out of here, walk out that door and be friends as friends need to be for the sake of the district. Okay? We all don't have to go over to somebody's house and have dinner or whatever. Just be civil to each other and remember what the purpose is of being a board member in Monroe Township. So, thank you. Thank you, Gazala. Thank you, Kate. Now, we'll go on to number seven, board vacancy. Did you, yes, Ms. Alvarez?
So, I sent that policy to everyone, and everyone read it, correct? Okay, so I did get clarification. We have 65 days to fill the vacancy. Today, I would like for us to have a discussion on how that will look for, for us as a board. Our policy states we have to interview every candidate in public. It also says that, let me be, let me find a spot. All right, so we're going to give public notice of the vacancy and invite any qualified person to submit a written request for consideration of his or her candidacy for the vacancy. It says the board may also require candidates to submit a resume with their written request. I do want to make a statement on this. I have gotten feedback from some members of the public that may or may not be interested, that do not feel comfortable sharing where they work publicly due to some of the behaviors of some members of the public in terms of, you know, I can just speak for myself on my behalf. I've had my resume Oprah'd. I've had attempts to Oprah my email logs from work, and there are members of our public community here that do not feel comfortable providing a resume. So, because the language says "may," I think we should consider that when we're deliberating.
Can I?
Wait, are you finished with what you're stating?
Yes.
Yes, as long as she's finished. I think Gazala had her hand up first.
Sorry. Sorry. So, I just want to kind of give my opinion on what you just said. I agree, you know, there's just too much personal attacks in the community, and so I get the point of not disclosing where you work or who you work for. But I would still feel, so when, when we run for office, we do share a lot of our professional detail as, as a way of weighting, weighting into us as a candidate, right? So, maybe we, I would, as a board member, like to see resumes, but maybe we give them the ability to redact any information about their employers and give us a generalized resume, you know, showing what their professional history has been, professional or any other kind, like work experience. Doesn't have to be working for somebody. Could be volunteer work, but a resume of what? Just applying is not going to give me an insight into the candidate.
Ms. Ratner?
I definitely understand what you're both saying, but I do want anyone who is applying to realize unless there's a change in, in the law for people who are filling vacant positions, that they would be required to fill out a form that would list, they still have to, that's what I figured, their employment, any of their relatives' places of employment. And, you know, I-
Sources of income.
Right. So, if that is a concern for any of these people, that, that could potentially, if they're not, if they're not selected, not elected, selected, then, you know, that point is moot. But I did just want to put that out there.
Can I just-
And then, Mr. Zeichner.
And then, Mr. Weiss wants to say something. So, to, those financial disclosure statements are harder to access by the public than a resume that we would have here in a board meeting, like you'd have to do an Oprah request to get a financial disclosure statement.
(Inaudible).
Oh. You don't, okay. Well, my suggestion, and I agree with Gazala, I was hoping that we could say a written request for consideration with any relevant work experience you wish to list on the document instead of a resume with redacted information. Either way, you're still providing where your skill set is.
Yes. Just as an example for people, you know, who are considering this, if you're a teacher, you can disclose how long you've been teaching, what kind of grades you've been teaching. You don't have to disclose the school. If you work in the field of, say, marketing, you don't have to disclose the agency you work for. There are ways to do this, and there are different, you know, places I know where something like this is presented. So, it's just to give us, the rest of the board that's going to deliberate on your, you know, on your suitability to this position, it helps us understand what you bring to the table, so.
Okay. And Mr. Zeichner had his hand up, right? And then, I think, Mr. Weiss, you're okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I, I agree with Mrs. Bora. I think you're 100% correct. As a matter of fact, let me take it a step further. I think resumes give a, a person opportunity to tell us who they are, and you get an idea by the way they express themselves. So, you get an insight into them because the way they write it, the way they present the resume. And I agree that you can always leave things off the resume. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal. But it gives them time to sit down, think out the process, they think out what they want to put down, and as a reader, I can really get a pretty good insight into that person because you're going to have to eliminate some candidates. How else are you going to do it? You, you know, you may get a lot of people who work in-
That's what we're discussing now.
Yeah, you can't, you can't eliminate candidates.
Okay, then, if you, if you can't, that's fine, but the same, by the same token, you still want to get an idea-
Of course.
-of who they are. And I think it benefits, it gives us more opportunities. That's what I'm saying.
Real quick, and then, Mr. Piero?
So, I think that's fine. I honestly was just wanting to explain if that is a true matter of concern for whoever these people are, like where they don't want to disclose no matter what, that would become public if they're selected no matter what. So, that, that was my point. I don't think we need every detail on a resume. I also did just want to get clarification on this. I personally believe that we should interview all of the people who apply, but I want to get legal clarification if we are required to do that. That is my preference, but I just want to see if we are legally required.
So, the answer to the legal question is no, but the answer, the real answer, is that your board policy requires that every candidate be interviewed. So, you, the only way around that would be the board voting to suspend that policy, which, quite frankly, I don't recommend. I recommend that you interview everybody because it's fair and then the process is clean.
Yes, I agree. Mr. Piero?
I would just like to know, like, once we put a timetable on the resumes we get, I think one thing we should do is, I agree with everybody about the information and a resume, and my personal opinion is if you want to say you're a teacher and don't want to stay the district for 15 years, or maybe you're, you know, you may be a stay-at-home mom who worked in the industry, teaching or business, you know, just to put in there, you know, what you did and how you did it, and then if they are selected, of course, they'll have to fill out the forms properly. But I think one thing we need to do is that if, once we put it out there and put a deadline on it, depending on how many resumes or applications or people put in for it, I would like to see us just have a special meeting just to interview people instead of mixing it with our board business. Because, say, 10 people apply, and, and then, you know, we're going to do it at a board meeting, we're never going to get to our board business.
Right.
So, I mean, if only two people apply and we wanted to do it first, I'm fine with that, but I think that maybe once, if, if, say, more than five people apply, I think we should have a special meeting to do the interviews and select the person because then we could take our time, do the interviews, more time to discuss any discussions we have, and then choose who we'd like.
And I think it's also important that we all get on board with regards to the questions-
Yes.
-for the candidates, that they're asked the same question. So, you're getting the same information, different opinions, different views from all the candidates. So, I would prefer we do it that way and have each board member ask one of the questions. Time limit the interview, put like 15, 20 minutes, what's the average, 15, 20 minutes for an interview? And then, maybe if we could get the paperwork from the candidates beforehand to go over.
That's how it'd be.
That's, okay. So, we could, we could review it and have more information about the candidate when they come here. I think, Ms. Ratner, and then, Ms. Bora?
So, I had sent an email earlier this afternoon when we had gone through this process, I guess it was about two years ago, give or take. I had reached out on the School Board Connections just to see how other boards were handling this, what kind of questions they ask. I had sent all of the information to you. It was today, so you may not have seen it yet, but there are some good questions that are there. It also included questions that came from New Jersey School Boards Association as well as a form that can be filled out, like sort of reading each candidate. And then, I also, two of our surrounding school districts, East Brunswick and South Brunswick, have just gone through this process within the last few months, and so I also looked to see how they were handling it, which is essentially, they interviewed the candidates in public. One thing that I really liked, I forget which one it was, but the other candidates were held in a separate area, so that way they're not hearing their answers. You know, and then, they're each, they're not given the questions in advance, each candidate, whether or not we'll allow them to maybe make like a 90-second statement and then ask them, you know, three or four questions. I don't think it needs to be too much, which is funny for me to say. But I think then, you know, what they did after that was they went into executive session purely for discussion. There was no voting, no straw polls, none of that. And then, they came out, and if there was a candidate that they liked, there was a nomination and a second if there was one, and then they did the roll call on those.
I think we all have to, Ms. Bora, I'm sorry, you have a statement.
No, that's all right. One, I was just going to comment on what Mr. Piero said. I wish we have more than five candidates. I wish we do. It would be great to see that sort of interest, but if it's up to five, it would just be a lot, and I, me and Ms. Alvarez were just talking about it before the meeting, that a special meeting, given that we're doing one right now in the month of September, October, it, it just gets very challenging. There's a lot going on, not just for us, but also for the administration. So, if it is under, we probably decided as a board tonight that if it's five or less, we will try to do it in the same, you know, public meeting so that we're not looking for a special meeting. To your point about the questionnaire, you know, Mrs. DePaine, you could probably use the board email and, without creating a quorum, maybe send us what you suggest as maybe five or six questions, and we could all comment as board members. If we could do a little bit of business on that outside of the board meeting, deciding what the, it's going to become public eventually what the questions are, but just if we could deliberate on that and kind of come to a consensus, and these are, these are going to be the questions. And then, you could set a format, one minute to every question. If it's only five candidates and it's a public meeting, I don't see how we can keep the other candidates from hearing the answers of the ones coming before them.
They should be, they should be sequestered someplace so they don't hear, yes.
If that's possible and legally possible, then that's, that's a great idea.
I went through it before in another district I was in. That's how they did it, yes.
We only did it once in Monroe. The last time we picked a candidate, we didn't do that meeting, but the interview, but the once before, I think there was only one candidate from what I know, and that candidate was interviewed in a public meeting, but that, of course, didn't have others that needed to be hidden. So, if it's legally possible, I support that idea.
Ms. Alvarez?
Just to piggyback on what Gazala just said, legally speaking, because we have had a lawsuit in the past at the last, what are we allowed to do in closed versus out here? Because my thinking was do it all out here.
That's, and that's what it says.
Okay, so, closed session, when it comes to board vacancies, the only thing that should be discussed in closed session is, is actually personal stuff. be discussed in closed session is actually personal stuff, thoughts about the candidate, you know, impressions of the candidate, things that you wouldn't necessarily want to say out here, because it may embarrass the candidates. And we don't want to do that, you know, at all, and their families and their children and all of that. So, the only thing that should be discussed is that personal stuff. In executive, there should not be a vote at all in executive. Any vote to fill this vacancy has to be done in the sunshine in the public. So, if this goes the way that, you know, all of the vacancies that I've ever dealt with in my career goes, it's going to look something like this. Candidates going to have a seat, board members are going to have questions, we're going to go round robin. Each board member will ask their question. The person will have the opportunity to respond to them, and then make a, you know, an opening statement and a closing statement. And then, they can stay in. Once all the questions have been asked, they can stay in, because they know all the answers, and just watch the other candidates come through. Once we run through all of that, then the board retires to close executive session, to discuss the personal stuff. Then, we come out and we take a vote. There's not a discussion in there of, who do you think? Who do you want? That's not really what that's for. It's supposed to be organic, but other than that, there are no rules for it. It's the process is whatever this board says the process is. And that's that.
Okay. Gazala had her hand up. She's beating you with her hand tonight.
I'll get there.
It's always you against me. What Mr. Weiss said just kind of gave me an idea, because we could prepare standard questions.
Right.
But at the same time, you know, based on who the candidate is, and what we individually as board members may have a concern about, as long as we all decide to be professional about it, I think it's a great idea if we can, and that would also put an element of surprise on the questions, as long as we agree to three general questions, and maybe a round robin of allowing each board member to ask a question that can be answered in 30 seconds or less, right? That would give us all a better chance to gauge the candidate. And I want to reinforce what Mr. Weiss just said, that these people are going to volunteer to step up just for five months. I wouldn't want to discuss, good or bad, about them in public. And so, I think it, the closed session is the right place to have the candidate discussions that we want to have as a board about anybody, without, you know, without embarrassing, or even making, personifying somebody to be, like, really great, while the other candidate is not feeling that way. So, it's a great idea to have those discussions inside, and then come out and just vote, without giving our opinions.
Yeah, there's one thing I just want to clarify, Ms. Bora. When I said round robin, no, I just want to, it can be done anyway. But the way that I've seen it is, there will be, let's say, seven questions. I'm making up a number. But each person will have the same question.
Right.
And they will ask it the same question for each of the five people. That's how I've seen it done. But, again, the process is whatever the board says the process is, so as long as it's fair.
And that's how it should be done. That's how it was done in the board that I was on. There are specific questions, because you want the same answers from each person, so you can, it's relevant to, for us to hear what they have to say regarding. I know Ms. Ratner, the first one is, why do you want to be a board member? Uh-huh. You know, that's a big question. She sent this today. I didn't have a chance to pull it off the computer, but Ms. Alvarez just gave it to me. So, I mean, I agree with Mr. Weiss, that it has to be four or five general questions for each person, and given so much time per question, and so much time for their interview. So, because I don't want one person to get, like, an hour, and somebody else get 20 minutes. And I want everyone to get the exact amount of time deserving, and then we'll go on to the next person. So, I don't know what everybody wants to do. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ratner, again?
Yeah, because she beat me before.
Excuse me?
Because she had beat me before.
Oh, well, I know.
So, I was going to sort of say what Mr. Weiss said. I understand what you're suggesting, but I feel like that leaves a little too much potential. And I also think it's important, even when we're running, we get questions from newspapers, and it's always, everyone's being asked the same question. So, I feel like we should try to stick with that as much as we can. I also, I guess, just looking at the calendar, because I agree with the idea of five or less, we would do it at our next meeting. Our next meeting is not till the very end of August, and from my recollection, they don't start at that meeting. They would, because they have to do all of their back.
So, my firm takes the position that when there's a vacancy, the person gets appointed right away, and must get the background check, and everything else done within 30 days of appointment.
Okay, so that, if we do that at the beginning of the meeting, they're able to vote on everything?
So, let me be clear on that.
Like, that they're not conflicted on?
So, they can theoretically, once they're seated as a board member, they have as much rights as any of you do. So, we can't say to them, you must abstain because you weren't here to hear the executive session from two times ago, we're not, but we can't do that. But generally, it's my advice to board members who get sworn in, like, that night for a vacancy. I say to them, you can abstain if you'd like, if you feel that you don't have enough information. But there is no, like, you must first, you know, be acclimated before you can vote. Technically, once they're seated, they're able to vote. The question is, do they want to abstain, because they may need additional information?
Okay, because my point was going to be, knowing that that's already pretty far out, right at the beginning of August. If there were more than five, I would only have asked, like, can we have the special meeting before the August, which we can still do anyway, but my point was going to be, because then we're not, you know, doing that till afterwards, and it could take a pretty long time to get them approved. But I would, you know, depending on how we want this to go, I would want to have a 10th person, knowing that their term is already short, be here for the maximum amount of time that would be allowed, agreeing that if it's five or less, then we'll just do it at the next meeting. It saves us money on a special meeting. But I do agree, I think it was Mr. Pirro who had said, if it's enough people, then we need to give them the time, be respectful, make sure.
Exactly. I think it all depends now on how many applications or inquiries we get. And if it is five or less, we can do it at the August meeting, if that's agreed upon by everybody, before that, you know, after we come at a closed session. And then, we can maybe go into, start the meeting, correct, and then go back after the meeting into closed session, ask the candidates to wait, and come out and appoint them, correct? Am I right?
Yes.
Just a
We can swear in that.
Yes.
Point of inquiry. So, you said to do closed session, and then go, like, you have the second closed session, usually at the end of the meeting, so you're suggesting we do it then, because then they wouldn't be able to participate in that meeting?
No.
Okay.
They don't have to participate in that meeting, am I right, Mr. Weiss? It's up to us.
I was just trying to.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see the person sitting in the seat by our September board meeting, because it's four months, and I'd like to see them participate and help us out with decisions. So, and that's how we've operated. So, I want to see that.
Right, I was suggesting, actually, like, because they, Mr. Weiss had said they can be involved in that meeting.
Right, right.
But you're suggesting we don't do it till, like, the end.
Well, it all depends on how many candidates we get. Like, if we can.
If we have less than five, and we do it in the August meeting?
At the August meeting, yes.
Is there a reason that we wouldn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, so that person could participate? I guess that was my question.
We can do it. I think, I mean, like, Mr. Weiss, can we do it before the actual meeting itself?
No, so I think what Ms. Ratner's asking is, once the August 20, if we have five or less
Right.
apply, at the August 27 meeting, I think she's asking, like, after flag salute, can we do interviews?
Right.
And then, appoint, swear in, and then that person participates
Yes.
in the actual August 27 meeting?
Yes.
The answer from a legal perspective is yes. It can be done.
That's what I wanted to ask you. Could we do it before our actual meeting starts? And you just answered me.
The meeting has to start.
Has to start, but I'm just saying, yes.
Yes, yes.
We can do it, yes, okay. You said it the better way than I did, so. Is everyone in agreement with that on the board here? Is there any discussions about, any questions or concerns?
No, no, I just wanted to move on to the next thing, like, the timeline.
Right, that's what I wanted to do, too. The next thing would be the timeline.
We can ask Ms. Allen what the notices are.
Ms. Allen?
Yes. Yes, so if we were to advertise this tomorrow, morning by 10 o'clock?
Okay.
It would be advertised, it would come on Monday, it would be in the paper, so we would have, I think, the 10 business days until the Monday before the board meeting?
Yeah, so there's no requirement on the amount of time that it needs to be advertised? I would suggest, I'm spitballing it here, but I would suggest that if you put it, we're going to advertise in the paper, that's one thing.
Right.
But also, like, tomorrow, we could put it on the board's website, so that we could at least get
Yep.
things going. And maybe you cut it off two weeks from tomorrow, which would then be the 21st.
Okay.
Which then lines you up nicely for the board meeting on the 27th. You may, at that time, depending, let's say you get 10 people by the 21st, you may say, we're not doing this at the 27th. We may need a special meeting.
Right.
Okay.
So, that gives us enough time to decide by that Friday, if we need a special meeting, or we can do it that meeting. So, I think that's fair to everybody, yes.
So, just to clarify, when we're putting this out there, because I had, like, if we do the special meeting afterwards, and they're not participating this month, we, because we're waiting for two weeks, I guess, we would have to do it after the August meeting. We can't really have the special meeting. Because I would also think we want to make sure that if there was that tentative date, that someone needs to be available, we would want to share that with the person.
Perhaps. So, this is what I suggest, and in view of the very good points that you raised, I suggest that the notice indicate that, you know, we're accepting applications for the vacancy, or letters of interest, whatever we want to call it,
Right.
for the vacancy, that it's due on the 21st, and that candidates will be contacted with a time and date at which board interviews will be conducted. Because we, quite frankly, don't know when those interviews are going to be conducted.
Right.
May be conducted on 27th, and it may, or it may be conducted, you know, shortly before or shortly after. So, I think just for now, put the due date for the letters of interest, and then indicate in there that it's anticipated that the board will conduct a special, a meeting at which the interviews will occur, and details will be provided to the applicants, you know, in the future.
Okay. And then, because I know we said two weeks, but if we were going to do it before, I feel like we'd want to make that a little bit shorter, if that date was going to be before the August meeting. But I'm fine with it either way, since we had talked about that person participating. The only other question I had, or I guess I wanted to discuss, is the, I guess, the selection of the person. I don't know if there is a specific legal process that we follow with that. Just, if you have candidates, does someone just nominate second, do a roll call on each candidate? I guess if you can just clarify that.
So, from the legal perspective, you need a motion, a second, and a vote, to a point. That's what you need from a legal perspective. When it comes to, you know, putting up, because we're not going to be discussing in the executive session who people are leaning towards and all of that, it may come out that we put somebody's name up, the, you know, first person that raises their hand makes a nomination, there's a vote that occurs, and it might fail. And then, we have to move on to another person.
So, do we vote on each candidate separately, or do we do motions and seconds on all potential interests? Like, what, sort of what we just did with the presidency?
So, it depends on if your bylaw says how the process is to go. I don't believe that it does say how to go.
It says, it goes in the order that
That the nominations are made.
It goes in the order the candidates were nominated with a second.
There you go.
So, similar to how the president's election happens.
Yes.
So, if I can just summarize what I just understood, we would advertise tomorrow with, asking them for a letter of interest with a supporting resume, if you need to redact information, feel free to do so.
Yes.
We'll give them a timeline of 21st to, a deadline of 21st. Then, we will consider every candidate that has applied by giving them a chance to interview. We will deliberate as a board on personal opinions in closed session. When we come out, if any of those candidates gets a nomination, then we will vote on all of them. If they don't, if somebody doesn't get a nomination.
No, 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 not all.
So, let's say, tonight, you were having the hand raises, right, between you and her. So, if you were to raise your hand first, and you get that nomination in first, that's, we're going to vote on your person first, your nomination first.
So, we don't
If Katie's too slow that night, and she's the second nomination.
Okay, I'm putting my hand up now.
You're putting yours up now for August?
Yeah. I'd like to.
Can we choose as a board not to do it that way, and to allow for?
Because I think
You have to suspend the policy.
You'd have to.
I think that would be like a
Yes, but you'd have to go, you're going against the policy.
But even, Ms. Bora, even the race to raise your hand, at the end of the day.
I will win against her.
Uh-uh, I'm going to practice.
But that's not going to determine who wins the vote,
Right.
because you still have to have the correct number of votes in order to get seated.
Well, that was my clarification, because we have to do a roll call on, it says, in the order the candidates were nominated. But like, so Ms. Bora had said, sort of with what happened, you know, with presidency, but like, if you had not declined, like, as the board presidency, I think we've only had maybe once or twice since we've been here, where there's multiple candidates, you do a roll call on each of the nominated candidates.
Yes.
Okay, because I was thinking that, you know where I'm going with this?
I think you have to list the nominees in order, right.
Right, so you would take the first nomination. That person, let's say they don't get enough votes. Then, we're going to go to the second person, second nomination. But if the first nomination, tonight, let's say tonight, Ms. Bora did not decline to be considered, and she kept her name in for tonight, we would have done the first vote, would have been in favor of not, or not in favor of Mr. Payne. That vote was successful, so there's no
So, we would not have, would have not have voted?
Right.
Oh, because
That's not how, that's not how I'm interpreting this policy.
Really? That's how it's done most places. How do you do it?
We open
We did a roll call on each
Wait, can we all, and not yell out, because everyone's voice is important, okay? So, if you all want to say something, I'd appreciate, we all want to hear what you want to have to say. Oh, Ms. Ratner?
Yes, so if Ms. Bora had accepted, we would have done a roll call in, I believe it's in the order of the nominations.
Right.
So, a roll call for each person to say yes or no on Mr. Payne. And then, we would have done a roll call for each person to say yes or no on Ms. Bora. And whichever person had more would have been the successful person.
The last sentence.
Yeah, that's
We're just going to have Mr. Weiss.
That would be very unique in the state. I've never heard it done that way.
Right.
The last sentence kind of speaks to that, because there's two people that get majority votes.
Yes.
Yeah, here you go.
Yeah.
No, but this is, you have this policy. The first candidate who receives the votes of a majority of the remaining board members will be elected to the vacancy.
But keep going.
In event, no, but in event, no candidate receives a majority vote, then you keep going.
Right.
Yeah, but that's for
But that's
And then, it says, if there's two candidates.
If there's two candidates, this, a second election shall be conducted between the two candidates. But that's, that's already like three steps
That's what we
Yeah.
What we've done in the past is allowed the opportunity for board members to vote yes on the, on two different candidates, which I know it's bizarre, but it has been, the way we conducted it, it kind of gave you the opportunity. It never has happened, but you could say yes.
The way your policy's written is the way that I said it's done in most of the state.
And the way Mr. Weiss said it, that's how I understood it to be also. So, I think we're going to go with that.
Right, no, I was just going to say, the board officer's policy is different. That might be the reason. So, our board officer's policy says, voting shall take place by verbal roll call after nominations. When more than one person has been nominated, the board will vote on candidates in the order they were nominated. Then, in the event no candidate receives a majority vote of the members, then the process would continue. But it doesn't say the first person would get that.
Yeah, but it's the first person who gets the majority of the votes.
There won't
Right, that's, this is the board officer's
Yeah, I understand.
board vacancy, but it doesn't say it for the board office.
Doesn't say that one for a board officer. I don't know if we need to update that or not, but that's
You can if you want. If this is something that the policy committee wants to do.
It has to be taken up with policy committee on that. So, so now, we have to decide, are we going to give a half hour, 20 minutes, what kind of limitation? And it all depends on how many candidates we get, too.
And how many questions you allow.
And how many questions. Now, Ms. Ratner sent everybody, I wasn't home all day, this. If you don't mind looking at the questions and emailing me, what questions you think are pertinent or best for our district?
But can I just say something? Because I don't, we need to kind of have, no, no, no. I want to ensure integrity of the process. And my concern is that if we're now talking about where we're getting the questions from, that may give advantage to somebody who has viewed the meeting, versus not viewed the meeting. So, my suggestion would be for everybody to look at what Ms. Ratner sent in, and then email to Mr. Payne, what question you think you want to ask. That way, we're not telegraphing to the public the questions that we might ask, the type of questions that we might ask, and things like that. It'll be a cleaner, purer process. And that's, again, not a legal thing, but it's my suggestion based upon experience here.
I thought, I thought that's what I explained, but maybe I didn't. But I'd also like you to send your response to Ms. Alvarez also. As vice president, we're going to work side by side on everything, and make sure that we're Velcroed together these few months, and make sure that we're Velcroed together these few months or whether how long it is we're here. And we both know what's going on, because you never know with life what happens. And we wanna make sure that the meetings are still run if one of us can't make it. So, that's how I did it in the past. And so, if you would CC myself and Ms. Alvarez, is there anyone else? That should be CC, do you think? No. You don't wanna be CC, do you? Do you have anything else? So, if you.
Usha had her hand up, I don't know if you saw.
Who did, Usha, I'm sorry, Usha, yes.
It's okay, I have a question.
Going like that, you have to do like Ms. Alvarez.
All right. Because we keep saying five applications or five candidates. I'm just asking question out of the loop, because this is my first experience. What if we receive only one application? Or, or if we receive ten or twelve or fifteen applications? How does that work then?
It's a great question. So, I guess the answer would be that it's either gonna be a long night or a short night. Because your policy requires you to interview everybody. And unless the board is gonna suspend that policy, which I do not recommend, because that is where we start going down a slippery slope. Unless you're going to suspend that policy, we're gonna be here for a while.
So, each one has to be interviewed, fine. So, if we have only one candidate, one application?
So, that's a funny, it's a funny question, not funny, in that even if it's a single candidate, that person could potentially not get votes.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so, let me just, let's talk about that weird scenario, where you have one candidate, nobody votes for that candidate, and then you don't have anybody.
Right.
You can start the process again, and it all has to be done within sixty-five days.
Sixty-five days, yes.
If it's not done within sixty-five days, the county superintendent is statutorily empowered to pick who you're going to. Now, but with that, I will say, when county superintendents have to pick candidates because the board can't come to a consensus, typically, the county superintendents will look to see the resumes that came in and make a selection from there.
And if we get one candidate and we interview, and we don't feel the candidate is good enough, then we're not going to put them on. So, we're gonna have to re, you know, put the information out again. And I mean, I wouldn't just interview one person, and then we're all sitting here going, well, we didn't like what they said. So, if we have to go back out, we would go back out, correct?
So, I don't know if we're allowed to go back out again before we would, like, if we close it and we have that person, I think we do, we can't go out again if you're. I just wanted to get, I guess, clarification on that. I was actually raising my hand, because I wanted to get clarification on what you said about the county superintendent. Because from what he had told us when we went through this, because we had gone past that time, we were told that because we have a current, I guess, legal quorum, that the seat could remain unfilled, that he was not required by law to fill that. So, I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Yeah, I guess by law, he's not, the county superintendent is not required to fill it. I've never seen that happen, but it's not to say that it can't or it won't happen. I would say that if you don't have somebody, let's say, one person applies and you don't pick that person, I would say that the board is well within its rights to, as long as we're within that sixty-five day window, the board is within its rights to restart the process.
Okay, I mean, and I guess we can, we can play the what-if game forever. But my question was, if we see the one candidate, they still need to be interviewed and voted on? Like, we can't just look at them before that and say, "We wanna go back out for more." Like, we need to go through that process. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
They have to be interviewed like anybody else, one candidate, and discussed and voted on, yes. Is everybody in agreement with that? Anybody have questions or concerns about it?
I just have one comment.
Yes.
I would really like to avoid a special meeting. And I think if we had ten candidates, I still think we could do it, the night of the meeting.
Okay.
At what limitation of time for each candidate?
Only because it's the beginning of the school year, it's very busy.
So, I think if there are nine of us up here and everybody's asking a question, and if you give them a little bit of time to speak at the beginning, you should be able to complete that within like fifteen, twenty minutes tops. I don't think we should be going to a half an hour. That's a very long time to talk with somebody.
Is everyone in agreement, fifteen, twenty minutes?
Fifteen minutes is good.
We all don't have to ask a question. We can each take one and like, wrote, you know, keep, and then have five or four, and then say it stops over here, the next group can start here and doing it.
If I can say that, if the questions are the same, maybe the board president can ask and keep the process moving along, because we've all kind of, by that time, agreed on the questions.
Oh, okay, that's fine too.
So, it's not a different question, so there's no reason for all of us to talk. You could conduct the interview. Our job is literally to.
I would like Ms. Alvarez also to participate in that too.
I don't think, if the question is the same, then.
Then we can each take turns to ask the questions, and you can write your notes. Okay, thank you.
I agree with Ms. Bora.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, you got it. Okay, any other discussion regarding the vacancy?
Just, Mr. Payne, would you just summarize the whole thing for the, you know, the public that's listening so that we know, we've discussed it, but just what's gonna happen in the next two weeks?
Well, and within the next two weeks, tomorrow morning, Ms. Allen is going to put in a, in their newspaper, and it's gonna go on our website.
Yes.
A request for a letter of intent with a small version resume of your background. You don't have to list your, where you work or anything like that, to be sent to the board office, to Ms. Allen, correct? By August twenty-first. And then she'll let us know how many candidates we have by August twenty-first, and we can decide if it's five candidates or even ten, according to Dr. Peck, interview them at the August meeting, as we open the meeting, and then start the meeting with that, and go into closed session, and pick our choice, discuss in close, the candidates that we have. I mean, if it goes over ten, I think we need a special meeting. I don't think, what do you think? What's everybody's opinion?
We'll press that.
Right.
Yeah, let's wait and see. And then that, Ms. Allen will send all of us copies of what information that she gets before the meeting so that we at least have some information about the person. And then Ms. Alvarez and I will ask the questions. And if you would look at the questions that Ms. Ratner sent today, that she had picked up from sample board question, questions. No, I'm not saying that, no. I'm not, don't worry. And pick out a few questions that you would like, send them to Ms. Alvarez and myself. If there's something else that you think should be asked, please don't hesitate to put it in there. Because her, Ms. Alvarez and I can discuss it and see, well, you know what? This might be better than that one that we saw. We all have to, and I'll bring it back to all of you and say, you know what? I got four or five people that said, "How about this?" And then I'll bring it back in an email, and we can decide whether we wanna add or subtract questions before that night. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, Mr. Payne, can I just ask a quick legal question? Mr. Weiss, the people who are, who want to put their application in, are the same rules applying? Like, I know you have to, if you are running for office, you have to be a resident for a year, all of that, because it doesn't specify in the policy, but it doesn't specify that you can't. So, I just wanted to get clarification on that.
So, I'm looking at a draft notice that Nancy was kind enough to create.
Thank you, Nancy.
If it's okay, I'll read it out loud, just to see if anybody has any issues with it since we're here in the sunshine. Legal notice, vacancy, Board of Education member. Monroe Township Public Schools, Monroe Township Middlesex County, New Jersey. Notice is hereby given that the Monroe Township Board of Education is accepting letters of interest and resumes from township residents to fill one vacancy on the Board of Education. The appointment shall be for a term which shall run through to the board's 2026 organization meeting. Now, Ms. Ratner, this is where your question comes in. The qualifications under NJSA 18A colon 12 dash 1. A board member must be a citizen of the United States. A board member must be a resident of the district the member represents and must have been such for at least one year immediately preceding the member's election or appointment. A board member must be able to read and write. Board member must be registered to vote in the district and not disqualified from voting pursuant to NJSA 19 colon 4 dash 1. A board member must not be disqualified from membership for the conviction of crimes pursuant to NJSA 18A 12 colon 1. Additionally, a board member must have no interest in any contract with or claim against the board. And a board member cannot concurrently hold office as mayor or a member of the governing body of Monroe Township. Interested parties must submit a letter of interest and resume no later than four PM on August twenty-first, 2025, to Laura Allen, and the address is provided in the notice. By submitting a letter of interest with any relevant information they would like considered to the board, the interested party affirms that he or she is eligible to vote in the state of New Jersey and meets the age, citizenship, and residency requirements as required by New Jersey law. Candidates will be contacted with a date and time when they will be interviewed. And then it's signed Laura Allen. Does anybody have any issues with that?
Any questions, issues?
Yeah, I saw the draft and resume was striked out. I think the text instead uses, "With any relevant information they would like considered." I think that that makes it okay to keep the resume optional. I feel like we should reword that part. We, I would encourage them to, so it should say, "A letter of interest and a resume." And in the bracket, it can say, "Redact any employer information you would like to."
Yes, that's fine.
So, let's use the word resume.
I think we should, yes, thank you, Ms. Allen.
That's why I wanted to show you guys over there.
Thank you.
Okay, are we?
I think you have to read that now, right?
Oh, yes, okay.
No, I was just asking if anybody had any other discussion before we moved on. Okay, Ms. Allen.
It is, it's recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education designate the newly elected board president as an authorized signatory board, on the board of education accounts.
Motion?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Has to be voted on?
Yeah, on this one.
Okay, Ms. Allen can take.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay. Next is the business administrator's report.
That was it, yep.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Next is our, next scheduled Board of Education meeting, which is on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh. All of our meetings will now be conducted here at the high school, and they will be starting at seven fifteen with a six fifteen closed session to seven fifteen, and we'll be out in public at seven fifteen. Anything else to be discussed?
So, that might change for our.
That might change according to.
For the next meeting, but we would make public notice of that.
Yes, yes, yeah, we would make notice of that according to what we get in, yes. Any other?
I just have one more thing I would like to request. Are we able to set out, send out a blackboard? Is that what you guys call it, about the vacancy? Or is it just gonna be listed on the website? You know, those notices that go up?